Moving to the other side, it's supposed to be on the left side of the room.
We're gonna get going, everybody. You ready?
Can the flag, the American flag be put in proper place?
Proper place on the left side of the room?
The American flag is supposed to be on the left side.
Okay, everybody, in six oh two, I'm calling this me and order. Start caller all.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Here.
Depeña? Depeña?
Thank you for calling. Please enter your PIN, followed by the pound sign. Transferring you to the conference now.
Present. Congratulations. Sunshine?
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public War 1975, known as the Sunshine Law, notice of this meeting was published in the Thursday, December 22nd, 2022 editions of the Bellevle Times and the Star Ledger. The Sunshine Law was complied with by adopting it before into the press, posting a file with the municipal clerk, the annual resolution showing the date, time, and place of each regular meeting. A copy of the annual meeting notice has been posted on the town bulletin board and also on the website.
Okay, moving along with our meeting agenda, the next item would be the report of the manager, although we're gonna pause very quickly just to make two very special presentations. We have two proclamations tonight, one for our Bellevle Fire Department, the other for the Elks. I'm gonna have our deputy mayor go first. If you'd like to either go down and present or... Chief, can we just make sure that mic is on, please?
It is.
Thank you, sir.
So resolved by the Municipal Council of Bellevle, New Jersey, whereas members of the Bellevle Fire Department participated in the annual Fight for Air Stair Climb in New York City to support the efforts of the American Lung Association. And whereas the American Lung Association has been dedicated to improving lung health and preventing lung disease for over 100 years, as lung disease affects millions of Americans and it is the third leading cause of death in the United States. And whereas firefighters are at the increased risk of developing lung cancer due to their exposure to smoke and other harmful substances during their duties. And whereas the Fight for Air Stair Climb is a fundraising event organized by the American Lung Association to raise awareness and funds for lung disease, research, advocacy, and education. And whereas the Fight for Air Stair Climb challenges participants to climb a 55-story building in 2023, Penn One Plaza in New York City, to simulate the experience of someone living the lung disease and promote physical activity and healthy living. And whereas the Bellevle Fire Department achieved first place in the Fight for Air Stair Climb on March 25th, 2023, and were also among the top 10 in fundraising efforts on climb day. And whereas the township of Bellevle commends the efforts of the firefighters who risk their lives daily to protect our community and encourage them to take steps to prevent, I'm sorry, to protect their own lung health through regular checkups, monitoring, and exposure of harmful substances, and education on prevention measures. Now, therefore, being resolved that the mayor and council of the township of Bellevle recognize the efforts of the Bellevle Fire Department in the mission to join the American Lung Association in the fights against lung cancer and to improve lung health, we wish them continued success raising funds to support the American Lung Association in the years to come. Thank you, Chief.
Shall we, who was there, and any other firefighter? Longer arms.
So we have guys who participated, there's Manny Antonio. Ralph Castellano, who's a retired member, not here. Mike Lambruggo, is Mike here now? Mike Lambruggo. I don't see the most important person on here.
I see her.
She's here. Is there anyone else that missed? I know, I know, the fellows trained really hard for this event. It's a great fundraiser for a great cause. They spend a lot of time beforehand. I think the last couple of years, did you guys finish first or pretty high?
2016, 2017, 2018, and 2023.
We also, I think we also do what some of the Bloomfield members write that they team up with. And so I know they've been doing it for a long time. It's a great cause and it raises money for a great cause, and we really appreciate it. Appreciate that you guys put in the hard work and the training, and it benefits the fire department as well as the fundraiser. So thank you all very much, and we appreciate it. Just to piggyback on close.
We have one more proclamation tonight. We have a representative from the Carney Bellevle Elks. May I have you come forward, please, in honor of Youth Week? Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me here.
So it says, whereas, resolved by the Municipal Council of Township Bellevle, whereas the benevolent and productive order of the Elks has designated May 1st through 7th as Youth Week to honor America's junior citizens for their accomplishments and to give fitting recognition of their services to community, state, and nation. Whereas the Carney Bellevle Elks will sponsor and observance during that week as a tribute to the junior citizens of this community. And whereas no event would be more deserving of our support and participation than one dedicated to these young people who represent the nation's greatest resource and who in the years ahead will assume the responsibility for the advancement of our free society. And whereas our youth need guidance, inspiration, and encouragement which we alone can give in order to help develop those qualities of character essential for future leadership and to go forth to serve in America. And whereas to achieve this worthy objective, we should demonstrate our partnership with youth, our understanding of their hopes and aspirations, and our sincere willingness to help them prepare in every way for the responsibilities and opportunities of citizenship. Now, therefore, I, Michael Melham, Mayor of the Township Bellevle, dear hearer, why proclaim the first week in May as Youth Week and urge all departments of government, civic, fraternal, and patriotic groups and our citizens in general to participate wholeheartedly in observance. Congratulations.
Fortunately, I'm not from Bellevle, but I grew up around Bellevle. As I kind of joked with the mayor, my first name's William, my last name's Dow, so I got my own corner in Bellevle. William and Dow, everybody knows where it is by St. Peters. I've been in out for over 30 years. We are dedicated to our youth. There are so many programs that we run. We are second in the nation to the government as far as what we give out, as far as scholarships. We're always part of Project Graduation, anything that's there that we can do for our youth, whether it's teaching them about the dangers of drugs. We have a hoop shoot program as well as a soccer shoot program. We run a peer leadership program. That first weekend in February, this is done only in the state of New Jersey, where we take students for the weekend. It goes to do it one day for the middle school students, and they learn how to cope with, you know, coming through school and, you know, whether it's the dangers of drugs. And we know today, of course, with the opioid, you know, problem, you know, it's so important to educate our youth, you know. So that's why we try to, you know, focus around that and try to do as much as we can. And that's basically why we do proclaim this week as, you know, Youth Week. And we really thank the mayor and council and the township of Bellevle in joining hands with us in doing that. Thank you, Mayor.
We're just gonna give a very brief recess in case anybody else here for proclamations wants to exit before we continue the rest of our meeting. Thank you. How are you?
Good.
Gentlemen, I'm gonna have to ask you to please exit the room. Thank you. Okay, moving on with the rest of our agenda. Next item on the agenda is the report of the manager.
Well, good evening. Just wanted to start off by letting the council know that we had initially advertised for a water sale, somewhat to a tax sale, but strictly on water bills for June. We have since been contacted by the state, and they actually put in a program to help people that are in the rears, which is exactly why we would have a water sale. And the New Jersey Low Income Water Assistance Program, as much information needs on our website, certainly you can call the U.S. Office. And by the state stepping in, it actually prohibits you from having a water sale and putting names on residents that are struggling. So, you know, again, I think this is still, you know, the effects of COVID that we're still getting. We have over $500,000 that is owed to us. And we did, we did a great job on the commercial. We probably collected over $30,000 in two weeks, three weeks on the commercial side. And we can still continue to move in that direction. But I did want the council to know that we do not no longer have a tax sale in place. Certainly that won't happen until further notice. I do want the residents to know about the New Jersey Low Income Water Assistance Program, because it is a good program. Also, this tax quarter, which is May, May 1st to May 10th, will be the last time we will be accepting cash. We're going to eliminate that. That's a fiscal recommendation. And so basically, the first quarter, which would be July, or I would say effective June 1st, we will no longer be taking cash. Most towns from New Jersey have gone this way. And again, this is a fiscal recommendation. The only other thing I wanted to say is, if you have heard, there's some talk about replacing the Kingsland Bridge. That's the bridge that separates Lynnhurst and Nutley. That bridge, there was a call today. What we found out is that it's not gonna even begin until 2026, because the funding's not even in place yet. But it's a two-year project. It could be a two-year project. When and if that does happen, obviously, it's going to have an impact on Bellevle, because it's gonna direct all the traffic. That will be the only way we can get across the bridge. So just, we will, over the next 24 months, we'll be providing updates. And the only other thing I do want to just remind the council and members of the public, second meeting in May, May 23rd, will be also here in our budget. We will. Hoping that we're gonna have it tonight, but, you know, that there's an 18-day lapse period on the advertising and things like that. So we will be ready for May 23rd with public hearing. We have not gotten confirmation back from DCA. So it's just, you know, we're right where we need to be with the budget process. Certainly available.
Any questions for the manager on his report? So we're owed $500,000 in water, but we can't do a sale to collect it, unlike a regular tax sale in December where we get like 98.9% on the sale. The state would not allow us to do that. Will the state write us the check? Is that the fund?
That was just legislation put in place last week. That's why it was scheduled, because it was going to happen, and then the governor, they put in the legislation and prohibited having a water sale.
Anthony, just let me add to that, because that assistance program...
The assistance program has literally millions of dollars, $500 million for people to pay people's water bills. So residents who qualify should get out there and apply for it, because we got one person who applied. They didn't have a water bill. The state sent the town $3,000 for that guy's water bill, that person's water bill. He didn't even owe anything, so his water bill's paid for the next five years.
I heard that.
So people should go out.
Yeah, the more people that actually participate that qualify for it, the more money we would get. So it's a good thing to encourage.
And the reason why they extended it, because there's so much money available and they want to push the program.
The applications.
Everything's on the website. So if you call the Ensign Sylvia, and she'll be happy.
Is that it?
That's my report, sir.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the report of the mayor. Couple past events. Two weeks ago, we had three different events on Saturday. We had our track dedication, which was a great event for the township. We also named the roadway for Danny Rafferty, a longtime employee, and we also had our recreation opening day. So spring has sprung certainly in Bellevle. Those were three events that were really well attended. Last week, this past weekend, actually, the Bellevle Police Department did their bike rodeo. Great to see all the kids come out, all the parents come out. Great to see kids that never rode a bike before get an opportunity to try it out. We also had three events this weekend. We had the community cleanup on the same day, and we also had the rock painting in our community garden. So things are happening in Bellevle. And then also, last Friday, I was able to be on hand for the Scene Friday Senior Club to swear in all the new officers. Next time, I'll send the deputy mayor over there to swear in the Tuesday Club, if they want to see you. Upcoming events we have, we have our community bike ride. Chief, do we have a date on that yet? I know there was some...
Yeah, June 3rd.
June, okay. We have some time to promote that. So that's a great day. That'll be our third annual. I think this is an initiative that our chief started. We literally shut down multiple roadways here in Bellevle and bring our youth and our kids and our parents on a bike ride that goes from the high school down to Bellevle Park, up and back around. Police let escort closed streets. Really, really fantastic event. Looking forward to that. It's gonna be in June. On Saturday, May 6th, is our Community Shred Day. Always, always a big event here in Bellevle. Community Shred Day will be Saturday, May 6th, from 9:00 to 12:00 at the Senior Center. Free health screening on Tuesday, May 2nd, from 10:00 to 2:00 here at the Health Department. Coffee with the Cop is coming, I don't have the date here. It's coming up, though. At Starbucks. More information's on our website and social media. And our DMV unit will be here on May 3rd. All the slots for the Real ID are taken. They only give us about 10 or 12 slots for the Real ID, but you don't need an appointment to do virtually anything else. You just basically show up. Some news, I got a very welcomed call last week from our countrywoman, Mikey Sherrill. She had hundreds of applications for, I guess, some kind of an earmark spending opportunity that they have for infrastructure. She was only allowed to select 15, and of those applications, she chose Bellevle's application, which is $4 million for that line replacement. She's optimistic that we will get that money. So that'd be great. It's only one of 15 projects that she picked, and Bellevle was one of them. Just want to remind everybody that Zumba and Tai Chi Yoga are still happening Tuesdays and Thursdays. Community garden applications are now available. Information's on our website. They're $25 a plot. And Chief, our groundhog is still at large. You were gonna put your best men and women on it last year. The groundhog in the community garden...
She's right here, isn't she?
The groundhog in the community garden is still at large. He's fatter than he was last year. We need to put an all points bulletin out for him.
May 3rd, Mayor, May 3rd.
May 3rd's Coffee with the Cop. Thank you.
I assure you, if you touch the groundhog, there will be a coffee issue.
No problem, Mr. Sheldon, get it ready.
Applications are now available for the Junior Police Cabinet. Also happens, I believe, in June or July. Police Department Take Me Home Program is a great program. Information's on our website. Helps law enforcement track seniors and special needs children. It's finally coming up, the SS County Hazardous Waste Recycling Day. It's gonna be Saturday, May 6th. I will be there with old cans of paint and oil. Also, SS County Computer Recycling Day is gonna be on Saturday, May 20th. Lastly, check out our library's website for all kinds of good programming events. Now, that's it for my report of the mayor. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes.
So the minutes of April 23.
We have a motion made and second. Clerk caller all.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Rosiana?
Yes.
O'Tanery?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Communication. Me?
Okay.
A, we received a communication regarding the Stormwater RFQ. I'm not sure what that means, though.
That means that, based on the last meeting in March, deputy mayor requested to go out again. We hadn't spoken about this a while ago, and somehow it fell through the cracks. And anyway, the RFQ is on the website starting tomorrow.
Okay.
Has been advertised, and the timeframe is April 26th and returnable on May 1st.
You're just as good as I am. B is planned zone park improvements. That's the number nine school playground. We are optimistic the bids are gonna come back much lower, so therefore, they were not, and we're gonna go out for a rebuild on that. Financial disclosures are due for all elected and I think appointed officials. The filing deadline is gonna be April 30th. And the clerk's office has received a letter of resignation from Mr. Goralman regarding the Bellevle store commission effective April 18th. Next item on our agenda is ordinances for possible adoption. We have ordinance 09-23, an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriations limit and establish a cap bank in accordance to NJSA 40A:40-45.14. I need a motion to open public commenting on that.
Make a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Clerk caller all.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Rosiana?
Yes.
O'Tanery?
Yes.
Melham?
Yes. So we are open for public hearing on this ordinance and this ordinance only. If you have a question about this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward, take your name and address for the record. Mr. Frank Antoni.
Good evening. Like I do every year, I oppose this because back years ago, the state, when we got the income tax, our legislators said we're gonna get NICUP, but we're gonna put a cap on government spending. But then a few years later, what they do, they pass this law that municipality wants it bypassed and raise it higher. It's higher. So it's another example of how much phonies we have in governments, and so there really is no cap. You're again gonna increase, I believe, 3.5%, which I oppose every year. The intent of the income and those other state monies that we're getting was to control government spending. So, and you've got any carriage to vote? No, I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Anybody else to this ordinance and this ordinance only? You haven't seen none. Is there any motion to close?
Motion second.
Or move for final?
And move for final adoption.
Motion to close and move for final adoption? Set caller all.
Here we have a second. Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Rosiana?
Yes.
O'Tanery?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Order 0923 is adopted.
And that was only 1%, not 3.5%. Next ordinance is ordinance 10-23, an ordinance to amend the revised general ordinances of Township Bellevle, Chapter 8-11.1, prohibited left turns and designated concerning, prohibited left turns designated concerning property located at 74 Washington Avenue, 78-102 Washington Avenue, and 75-77 Williams Street. Need a motion to open for public hearing?
Motion second.
We have a motion made and second to open for public hearing. Clerk caller all.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Nick Rosiana?
Yes.
O'Tanery?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes. We are now open for public hearing on this ordinance and this ordinance only. Mr. Sheldon.
Good evening, Michael Sheldon, 47, Floyd Street. Since this ordinance and the next one on the agenda are basically parallel, they both involve prohibiting left turns, I'm just gonna confine my comments to this matter. They will automatically extend to the next ordinance as well. Firstly, I want to preface it by saying I appreciate your well-intentioned restriction changes here, the zoning to prohibit left turns. In this particular resolution, if, I don't know if the audience, many members have a copy of it, but it says later on, no left turn for both ingress and egress from the driveway at the property of Washington Avenue, otherwise known as Route 7, which is a state-controlled road. Very terrific that you're proactively dealing with this, but I wonder if you're going to inadvertently cause some future litigation problems for the township. And let me explain what I mean by that. Firstly, all of Washington Avenue is double striped. It has two yellow lines. And there's a lot of confusion among motorists. You know, once you get your license, you kind of quickly forget all of the detailed rules about when you can pass, when you can cross, et cetera. So just so that everybody is on the same page here, I consulted a legal website. This is a lawyer who practices in Morris, Michael Burcock. He has a really useful non-legal ease article here explaining what the double yellow lines mean in New Jersey. And I just really quickly want to read this into the record. It says, "Well, many motorists in New Jersey believe that no passing or crossing is permitted over the double yellow lines. Determining liability in auto accidents caused by crossing over the double yellow lines can be tricky. Traffic laws exist for a reason. Those who obey traffic laws can substantially minimize the risk of preventable car accidents in New Jersey." And then he has a section here that says, "Is it illegal to cross the double yellow lines to turn left?" Which is the heart of these two ordinances. And he goes on to write, "It often happens that when you arrive at your destination on the left and notice that the roadway is divided by double yellow lines. Regardless of how you ended up in this situation, perhaps it was the GPS that got you there, you might be wondering whether it is legal to make a left turn to cross over the double yellow lines. Unfortunately, New Jersey's law does not expressly address the issue of crossing the double yellow lines to make a left turn. Nonetheless, under New Jersey Revised Statute 39:4-123, you could be accused of failing to exercise due care when making that turn, especially if the maneuver resulted in a motor vehicle accident. Under New Jersey Revised Statute 39:4-126, drivers are also required to signal their intention to turn, quote, 'during not less than the last 100 feet traveled by the vehicle before turning.'" Right? So with that said, we all understand now that in New Jersey, you can make a left turn across the double yellow line. And there are literally scores of businesses, residential comp... And there are literally scores of businesses, residential complexes along Washington Avenue, where people routinely make such left turns over the double yellow lines.
Mr. Sheldon, do you have a question about this ordinance?
Yeah, so, what it seems to me, you're restricting such left turns at two particular properties. And this first ordinance is the big complex that is now finishing completion by Premier Developers, which Mr. Frantantoni correctly calls the human cages. There are also, the second ordinance deals with the future residential complex across from the motorcycle mall. So it seems that you're selectively restricting left turns on these two properties, but you're intentionally bypassing all the other businesses and residences on Washington Avenue that won't be included in this restriction. So, my question is, is this essentially a double standard? You're, it's almost akin to spot zoning, isn't it?
Is that your question, Mr. Sheldon?
Yeah, yeah, it is.
You could've asked that question five minutes ago, I could've answered it five minutes ago. Does it nothing do with us, these are major developments that make an application to the state of New Jersey, because Washington Avenue is a state highway, and the state of New Jersey requires this township to pass this particular ordinance with this particular wording for those particular properties in order for them to go forward with their development.
Well, that may be true, but still-
It is very true, that's why we're doing it.
But the state law says you can still, you can still pass over-
They want us to do it, we're doing it.
I don't understa-, I don't, it seems to be fundamental inconsistency here, that the state's telling you, someone in the state is telling you to do this, but the others, the state law says you can pass a double yell-
It's hard to say, Mr. Sheldon.
I know, I just don't know what, you know, this doesn't seem to make any sense in the final analysis. So I just wonder, you know, if you, you know, you are gonna wind up with future litigation from Premier Developers or the residency family, asking why are our people being restricted this way, and no one else on Washington Avenue is.
Thank you. Anybody else to this ordinance and this ordinance only? Nope, hearing none, any motion to close and move for final adoption?
Motion, second.
We have a motion made and second to close and move for final adoption, Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
O'Terry?
Yes.
Mayor Malham?
Yes.
Orderment 10-23 is adopted.
Next ordinance, ordinance 11-23, ordinance for possible adoption, ordinance to amend revised general ordinance of Township Belville, Chapter 8-11.1, prohibited left turns designated concerning property located at 630 Washington Avenue and 632 Washington Avenue. Need a motion to open public hearing?
Motion, second.
We have a motion made and second to open public hearing, Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
O'Terry?
Yes.
Mayor Malham?
Yes. We're now open for public hearing on this ordinance and this ordinance only. Frank Tantoni. Same exact ordinance as the one before, gonna be the same answers.
If like, we're both of them.
Thank you.
The only thing I would like to say, I think you should do, that 630 there is south of the path mark, the Shoprite. To the north of the Shoprite, we're building another 115 units. Why isn't that also included?
When they get to the point where they have to make their application to the state, the state will require them to do the same thing, therefore, we'll have to do it for them as well.
Do it for them, alright, 'cause that's a dangerous intersection, thank you.
Thank you. Hearing-
Move for final adoption?
I'll, is there any motion to move for final adoption, yes.
Second.
Motion made and second, Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
O'Terry?
Yes.
And Mayor Malham?
Yes.
Orderment 11-23 is adopted.
Okay, moving on to ordinances for introduction. Ordinance 14-23, an ordinance to amend revised general ordinance of Township Belville, County of Essex, New Jersey, Chapter 8-6A, Schedule, oh man, my Roman numerals.
8A.
8A, four-way stop intersection designated-
Designated, that's the Greylock and Norton Street.
Greylock and Norton, got it. Need a motion to introduce?
Motion, second.
A motion made and second to introduce, Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
O'Terry?
Yes.
And Mayor Malham?
Yes.
Orderment 14-23 is introduced.
Next ordinance for introduction, ordinance approving the First Amendment to a financial agreement between the Township Belville and 91 Terry Street Urban Renewal LLC. Need a motion to introduce that?
Motion, second.
We have a motion made and second to introduce, Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
O'Terry?
Yes.
Mayor Malham?
Yes.
Orderment 15-23 is introduced.
Orders is on the table, hearing none, seeing none, remove it, we'll keep it there.
Mayor, if nobody's gonna move to take that, it can be removed from the agenda.
After some meetings?
It could've been removed after the first meeting, it wasn't, and it can be moved.
So they can make a motion to move it?
Nope.
No, 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 no. It dies on the agenda.
Don't put it on, take it off the agenda.
Don't put it anywhere.
It died in Jan-, in July.
That's a wives' tale.
That's why we have you. Okay, so next meeting it'll be, poof. Alright, need a motion to open public commenting?
Motion, second.
We have a motion made and second open public commenting, Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
O'Terry?
Yes.
Mayor Malham?
Yes. Okay, we're open for public commenting, if you have a commenting for this public meeting, please raise your hand, I'll call upon you, come forward, state your name and address for the record. You have five minutes, hopefully talk about township business. Mr. Frantantoni.
Phil, it's Frantantoni, I just have one question. Are we ever gonna get a full?
Thanks. Thanks.
Of all of you up there, instead of people on the phone or not showing up? I mean, if you, if you run for something or sign up for something, don't you think you should make the commitment to be there when the meetings are called?
At our last meeting, Mr. Frantantoni, we had a full day.
Yeah, but that was, but previously you haven't, how many of them? I can understand in sickness or if something turns up, but this is getting really outrageous, so maybe you can speak to these people and tell them, make it to the meetings.
Anybody else in public commenting? Please.
Mrs. Carmella Fleischer made 33 main sheet. First of all, I wanna thank the DPW, they, I put a notice out on GoPilot that there was a poll on Terry and near the old Kmart.
Terry Davis. Terry Davis.
They-
I submitted the same one, but by the way.
Oh, okay, good. They addressed it very quickly. Wanted to let the Green Team know that the flower near the school, so pretty. And is there any plans on putting any more around the town? 'Cause that really isn't very nice, is it? That really, really is, we took a drive by it the other day.
Yeah, we're working on it.
Oh, okay. And again, I'm sorry we weren't able to come out on Saturday for the Green Team to help clean up. We saw you, you know, on Main, so you guys did a great job. It would be nice if the state actually came in the same day that you guys were out there and actually took, 'cause half of the stuff is on 21. You know, wanna thank, who was in charge or whose brilliant idea was it to put the agenda on the bulletin board?
Jackie.
Very good, well, thank Jackie.
That's what I'm gonna do.
Whoseever, let's put it this way, whosoever brilliant idea it was to put it on the bulletin board, I thank you. Okay, so that's all my thanks.
I really don't know, I'll just make it-
It was made on council.
Whatever, whoever, thank you.
If you're good with us.
So that's all my thanks. The parking meters. I understand that times are changing, credit cards are, you know, the way of the future, blah, 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 but every other town still has change.
No.
Okay, rude.
Let me have you finish your comments and then we'll try and get you some answers. Pila Gallery, we're gonna wait until our public is done speaking, thank you.
Thank you. So, my suggestion would be if it could go back to, I understand if you don't wanna go back to whole change, and I understand that, but in my opinion, that is leaving money on the table. If you have to come down and park and put a credit card in or a debit card in for 10 or 15 minutes on Washington Avenue, people aren't gonna come down to Washington Avenue, in my opinion, so every other town-
Our collection is up by the tune of hundreds of percent.
Right. But, again, that's fine, but every other town is still taking change.
I don't disagree with you, I have a car full of change that I would love to use.
Okay.
Today, I had to use the app.
Okay, alright, so, alright, that's a little rude, but that's okay. Through the chair to-
What part of that was rude?
I'm trying to make comments, and-
Well, that part was rude, I, that happened a few minutes ago, though.
Okay. Through the chair to the chief.
Really, the green was, I'm agreeing with you, that I like to use change as a-
No, she said, she didn't mean you.
She said it was the person I was making.
Okay. It's all good.
Right.
Delete it.
Again, through the chair to the chief. A friend of mine came to me, there's parking problems on Raymond Street with this company, CCI. They have rolling trucks, like double parked idling trucks, she can't get into her driveway.
Really?
Yeah. So she wanted me to bring that to, you know, the attention.
Maybe you could tell her, call the police in this school instead of going for you, 'cause it's taking off the long time to do this.
No, 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 I saw her yesterday.
Okay.
I saw her yesterday, and she has called, and they've come out and taken care of the problem at the time. She also called the town mayor, or the manager, and the answer that was given that see, this company has parking for their employees, for their trucks, but not for their employees, so, and they, she was told that this company was grandfathered in for this parking.
I'll have to look into that, Colonel.
Thank you. On the agenda, it's letter C, what shared services with Orange would that be happening to?
The Health Department would do it annually, every single year.
Oh, okay.
And that's enough.
And again, I'm familiar with everyone up here, these two gentlemen in the corner, I, we don't know who they are, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with them. If they can be introduced?
They're bodyguards.
Okay, I was gonna say, seriously? I got a couple of guys I can call, maybe, come on, seriously?
They work for the school district, they're looking at our audio video system.
Oh, okay, yeah, like I said, it would just have been nice if they were introduced, that's all. And the blood drive, 'cause the lovely blood people keep calling because I'm a negative. Is there gonna be a possibility that that can be brought back into?
We usually do it twice a year, I'm not sure the next date, though.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in public commenting? Mr. Tantoni?
I heard there was a little contradiction to Carmella's statement about other towns accepting coins, someone said, "No, they're not." Well, I told you at the last meeting and meeting before, on the way to my daughter's house, we stopped in Brookfield, we went for a phone up there, quarters in the meter. Montclair accept coins in the meter. Carney still had, Carney Avenue still had the old coins. North Darlington, coins in the meter. So, we're not doing what other towns are doing. It's very inconvenient, I've lost customers, you know, they come, these people who come to do laundry aren't wealthy, a lot of, some of them don't have credit cards. And they come, they start screaming at me, right? So, let's pull that little piece of metal out so they can put the coins in again. You've paid for these meters that accepted everything, why aren't we doing it? Convenience to our residents. Now, I'm gonna, I've been, it's years now of why we're filling our excavations when we do water line service or something with gravel, which is expensive, and I was told everybody does, and then the good manager goes and gets a letter from Public Service, right, that they do it differently. Well, my grandkids have been over the last couple of weeks. I walk around the corner to Cedar Hill Avenue. Cedar Hill Avenue, they've been working there for weeks, if not months, all new gas lines and all. Here's the pictures. I'm gonna give them the icon of-
Thank both of them, appreciate it.
You'll see, I have another one, I forgot to print it out. Public Service puts the dirt next to the excavation, and they put them back in. If you look at the one picture, they got the gas tamper on there. They put a foot or two in, they compact it, put another foot, and compact it. I don't know why we're spending all this money on gravel. Now, if you go to 116 and 128 Longbow Avenue, they did two water surfaces in the fall. And again, they tore the gravel in. And this is all over, I brought, go up Home Street, every single one is excavation. The surrounding soil settles into the gravel, and the sink collapses. Go look at those too, they're about five, six months old. And the street continues to collapse as the dirt from the surrounding excavation goes into the gravel. I don't understand it. You know, so I'm giving a verbal opere now, I'd like to, how much money was spent on gravel in the last four years? The other thing is, there's a big article in the paper, "Why is Patterson's property tax base falling?" And it goes on to say, it's, Patterson has tons of developments on the books with abatements, which allow those property owners to avoid paying full or partial taxes, and the citizens, the other citizens have to pick up the difference. You've got an assemblyman, Benji Wimberly, he says, "We're busting at the seams. Utterly, something has to be done because all these services are increasing." The other, from the city's fourth ward, says, "They're building larger apartment buildings from lot line to lot line without any open space, and it's creating an increased need for services, for bleach, for fire, for garbage disposal." So, you know, this is exactly what I've been telling you, all this overdevelopment, you know, and it's insane, the one that I brought up before, 710 north of Shoprite, is insane. The planning board, you remember, you're a member, approved it lot line to lot line, like you did with Richie's Autobody. Where is the open space? I brought it up to the planning board, I read the blight statue. The A, the first thing to declare blight is so lacking in light, air, and space, that it's harmful to human existence. So I don't know what you're doing with all these things, well, I know what you're doing, and the campaign cash from the developer is flowing into your campaign funds, and we're getting this idiotic development. It's happened all over the state, here's Patterson, the poor people of Patterson are suffering, the one and two family homeowners, the developers are getting rich, you know, they got a guy over there, Florio, he's got over 400 developers-
Did you interrupt, Mr. Tantoni?
Making tons of his money. Yeah, well, we gotta stop this overdevelopment. It is killing us, and it's raising our taxes, the demands for services are, once they're rented, it's insane.
Anybody else?
One more thing, the other thing, you're not paying attention, you guys are two of you are on the planning board and all that. Everybody's buying online now, not everybody, but the good, many, many people. You're not making any provisions for all these trucks, 158 units up at Williams Street, all these people are gonna buy, where are all these delivery trucks? Go to park, while they're delivering.
Tantoni, you have time.
The planning board doesn't think of these real light things.
Thank you. Anybody else in public commenting, sir?
May I just, just a point of information, and certainly not to debate Mr. Frantantoni, we can agree to disagree. PSC is replacing gas lines. We don't replace gas lines, we only replace water lines. Why do we replace water lines? When the water pipe breaks, water pipe breaks, there creates soil, creates the water, it's just mud, okay? What you have here in the picture is dry soil, let's say we're replacing gas lines. We do not replace gas lines, we only replace water lines.
DDP tells us that soil, we can't put it back in, thank you.
Hey, my name is Daniel Inuzo, 211 D Wade Avenue. First, I wanted to thank you personally, you helped me with an abandoned house, I don't know if you remember, with the raccoons. The reason I came here, I applied for pistol purchasing permits over 30 days ago, and the state law is 30 days. The only answer I get from the town is, "It's not complete, sorry," you'll get an email. You know, I understand it's kind of a sensitive subject, but, I mean, previously I waited six months for concealed weapons permit that's supposed to take 90 days by law. That's the only, I just wanted to ask if there's anything that, you know...
Yeah, without knowing the specifics of your particular status, I will tell you, and I had the same exact question, and I've had this conversation face-to-face with the chief, there are people that tell me they get those concealed carry permits in a couple of days, and I ask them where they're from, and those people are from Cape May. When you ask somebody from Essex County, how long it takes, it takes a lot longer, not necessarily because of the Township available or our police department, but because of a Superior Court judge that has to sign off in Essex County, that takes their time. So, I don't know the particulars of your particular situation, but I can almost guarantee you the holdup is not here, the holdup would be the county.
Well, the pistol purchasing permits have no, don't, I believe don't have anything to do with the county, that goes directly from Records Department to the chief. The concealed weapons permit is...
It could be a background check, it could be the fingerprints that are taking a while, there's a whole host of things, but I've asked the question my own self to...
Pay your $2.
Sometimes you don't...
Did you pay your $2?
Yes, I did. Sometimes you say, people don't pay their $2. The chief is here now, so...
Look, just the fact that you can't intervene, you'll have to review your application.
Yeah, but there could be a whole host of...
Yeah, yeah, because we're back the same day, and it's been...
It's not the same, I'll sign it now, take a look.
I am waiting longer than 30 days, by the way. And I'm the mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Anybody else? Mr. Sheldon?
Good evening again, Michael Sheldon, 487 Flood Street. As I tried to get done before the meeting tonight, under the way, it's my understanding that the US flag in public meetings is always supposed to be on the left side as the audience faces the room. Something I've learned over the years in working with people like Michael Perron, our Township historian, Tom Brawley, both individuals who are incredibly active with preserving our history, dealing with Veterans Affairs, et cetera, so I defer to their judgment, but I believe that the US flag is supposed to be first in order, and it should be on that side. As I've asked during the last three, four council meetings, have you given any consideration to my request to make the reserved parking spots in the northeast portion of the lot available to the public after hours from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM? Obviously, parking has become much more difficult now with the restaurant in operation, it would be a very nice accommodation to residents if those spots, which obviously generally are not going to be used by staff after 6:00 PM, could be made available to the public. Little Street, I've also asked about this for the last several months, there's been major renovation work, not only gas lines, but a new water main apparently has been installed running from the Leash Union to Little Street. It looks like all the work is now done, but the street itself is in horrible condition, and it's worsening, you know, day by day. Is there any plans, do you have an estimated time when Little Street, which is a Township emergency road, is finally going to be repaved? Public hearing, Mr. Iarcono acknowledged during his remarks that the public hearing is going to take place on May 23rd. So you pointed out the last meeting, when you published your introduced budget, the third page in said that the public hearing would take place tonight. Obviously, there are hiccups, you delayed it, but according to the DCA's own calendar, municipalities are required, or were required, to adopt their budgets by the end of April or the first meeting thereafter, which in our case, according to tonight's agenda, the next meeting is May 9th, but you're waiting until May 23rd. I know you're going to say, "Mr. Melham, we missed it by one meeting," but regardless, it looks like you aren't complying with this DCA requirement. The last thing I want to say, while I still have a couple of minutes left, as you're aware, during the last week, the Board of Ed, our Board of Ed, has had a public workshop, and last night, their public hearing for the budget, and I pointed out how, not only according to their budget, but your introduced budget, on page 16, you're anticipating revenues from the Board of Ed in the amount of $1,487,500. Those, that amount of money is composed of two things. Principal payment on the shared services bond ordinance that you passed last April in the amount of $11.9 million plus interest. Thing is, you got to keep in mind that the Board of Ed is paying you just under $1.5 million. Last year, after the bond anticipation notes were sold, and it was done last July 27th, you sold bands in the amount of $17.4 million. That included the $11.9 shared services ordinance plus another $5.7 million for general infrastructure improvement. And I was concerned at that point because according to Emma, the maturity date for that band was this July, less than one year after the bond notes were sold, and I raised concern, how are you going to, you know, pay off that $17 million? Mr. Di Maria, I'm glad he's here tonight...
Di Maria.
Di Maria, I'm sorry, Di Maria, thank you. Said, under state law, municipalities have three years, and I asked him if, where is that in writing?
Ten years.
Now it's 10 years?
No, it was always 10 years, it's the third year they had to put that in the principal install. But the shared service agreement, we have a 10-year limitation, so why is it amortized on 10?
All right, thank you. I'm glad you're here tonight because actually that answers all my questions. I was concerned because the, I was under the assumption it was three years, the Board of Ed is paying you at $1.5 million, obviously it's going to take, they're scheduling 10 years, and I didn't understand that inconsistency. Last night, none of the board administrators, Dr. Tonko, Mr. Palladino, et cetera, could explain this, and they just said, "Well, this is what we were told to do," but they didn't have a definitive answer for me. So, thank you, thank you for clarifying that tonight. So, if I could possibly get any answers tonight as to the parking spot situation, if you could make that minor concession to the residents available after hours from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM, and if you have any information at all about the Little Street is going to be paved. Thank you.
So you answered the parking, if that was going to be considered, you would see that before a work session and see the public conversation about that. Little Street, I have no information on the management. So Little Street is scheduled to be done. We're hoping to, you know, we have contractors in town that started, we have a list of, I believe, 17 streets. The contractors are in town now, they're doing the concrete work for us, and when they finish all the concrete, then they bring the paper. So Little Street is, I think, because there's 17 streets, I don't know the exact order that the contractor is going to do it, but it's definitely this year. Anybody else in public commenting? Hearing none, seeing none, any motion to close public hearing?
Moving, great. Second.
Motion made in second to close public commenting. Clerk call or roll?
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes. Next on the agenda, can set the agenda? Actually, before we do that, if we have to go back into public commenting, we will, but anybody that's on the call for public commenting. Okay, fine. Can set the agenda? I'm good with it as is.